Six thirty, need to come to order please. Public comment, anybody who wants to speak, raise your hand, you'll be recognized, go to the podium, address, three minutes. I guess we'll move on to item number three, Select Board Organization. Who you got Julie?
Well, this is the first Select Board meeting after the election and so traditionally and by our policy, the Select Board selects a new chair, discusses liaison assignments, although in the past it was sometimes bridge to the next meeting, talking about the meeting schedule, and then the past couple of years, we've also talked about board goals and objectives, which again, sometimes gets deferred to another meeting.
What's your interest?
What's my interest?
Yes.
I nominate Kerry Brown as the next chair.
Let's take a nap.
Thank you.
Is you okay?
Yes.
All of those a favor?
Aye.
Aye. You can vote for yourself. Do you want this chair?
No, let's finish up the evening, so I don't stumble around. We have a long agenda, so let's move through it, and I'll pick it up next time.
Alright, sounds good. Our next thing is liaison assignments, do you want to do that tonight, or specific ones that you'd like to stay on? Julie, what are they?
As you know, I'm on the, I'm on the energy, as the other one, and also on race track, and also on ag, and I'd like to stay on those three.
Scott Bogby is Conservation Commission, Heritage Commission, and Lake River Regional Solid Race. John McCores is Planning Board and Recreation Commission. And Mr. Bogby, sorry, is also the TCDC.
Oh yeah, let's not forget that. I'm happy to stay with what I have.
Alright, let's make yourself.
So keep the same?
Yes, at this point. Meeting schedule, I, still Monday nights, I still run Academic Senate University, so it's six thirty if you don't mind. It's fine with me. Sure. Alright, let's stay on Monday.
Do we have a vote?
No.
Excuse me?
I guess that was pretty straightforward. What vote would you like?
Oh, you know, six o'clock was nice.
Yeah, it's nice, but...
So the schedule will continue to be every other Monday except for holidays?
Correct.
In which case, it is typically the Tuesday following.
I agree, sounds good. Do you bring the golden objectives we had last night?
I did, it was actually a document.
Is it there somewhere?
It is, if you hit the down arrow. So if you hit this arrow.
Oh wow.
Okay, I know, right?
Not bad.
So obviously, the notes in red, I updated today.
Did you do that? No. Mr. Brown is still struggling here?
Sorry.
With your technical support, you know, how's it get over?
I'm not struggling.
I still haven't migrated to a smartphone yet, I'm still in the flip, you know? I'll probably die that way. Scott, do you have one, Scott?
Are you now that everybody?
Yes.
Goals, 2017 goals.
Oh yeah, I already read that. So the only thing that we didn't really do is the little park, sun setting thing.
Although, isn't Little River Park really a continuing work in progress?
Yeah, but there's a permit.
What's the permit?
Condition to use some, some permit.
The AOT permit?
Yeah, AOL. Alter, alteration of train.
That would be AOT.
AOT, excuse me. I'm taking way back to AOL.
So have we, well, can we ask Mr. Stevens to come to the podium?
Please.
The expiration date's up on my top boy box.
So have we complied with everything, or, because I thought it was...
Pretty much, I mean, there's a few minor things we ought to, just some minor ditching we ought to do in there, where the horseshoe pits were, there's some corrosion in there, there's a little erosion on the little ramp that goes up to the ball field, very minor stuff, but other than that, we're in pretty good shape. I guess, I would just, I mean, the completion date's a year and a half from now, I believe. We got at least a year and a half, I don't think, I think I'd leave it open, in case something, I don't think comes up myself, but just gotta, somebody's gotta make a note to say, hey, we're all done, yeah?
Can you put on your list of things that you have to do, that you can start checking those off, right?
Right. And I'll send the date to Julie as well.
Thank you.
But I'd like to, I just, I was curious about the other day, I looked at, it's at least a year and a half, I can't, I put up on the whiteboard, but it just skips me now.
Thank you. So maybe we can put that one.
Yeah, that one will have to stay on the goals, are there any other, Mr. Stevens, you have future goals and objectives, or you want to do that next time?
Well, the Town Center Vision Committee, that's a big one, so moving forward, I think we can maintain our top ahead, but maybe we can take the two now and next year.
I would say, maybe we want to come there, continuing the efforts towards energy efficiency.
You could, yes.
Because I mean, they're actually, I mean, obviously, we're going to talk about them tonight, but there are a couple of big projects, but there's always ways that we can...
That's fine.
Well, it's kind of a go green effort, I guess.
Right.
Yeah.
That's true.
Go green effort.
So let's put that on the agenda for next time, other ones that you might think about. I think that's all we had on that particular item, we'll go to item number four, Randy Stevens, Highway Supervisor.
Evening.
Evening. I'm here for, to review the quote for Wetland Permian for Thompson Mill Road for replacement of two culverts. As you can see by the spreadsheet, there was a very wide range, twenty-one hundred to eleven thousand twenty-five. And some part of that is because the wetland permitting rules are quite confusing, and maybe how you interpret them, what you do for a bid. So I talked to the, with Powell Asset, Luke Powell from Powell Asset Mapping, had a phone conversation with him, and several emails. He feels pretty confident that he can do it for that price, he's checked with, you know, I asked him, I said, some of the other ones have surveying and engineering in there, and, he says, I don't think you need it, and he did some check-in, and he still believes he doesn't need it, but he did need the engineer, and he has somebody who can do it for a thousand dollars, so, which would still put him, you know, he's pretty confident he doesn't, but it would still put him way below the others, so...
Have we used him before, Randy?
No, we haven't. He is a, he is a retired Assistant Director of Public Works in Laconia, so he's been on the other side of the fence. Seemed pretty reasonable, seemed to know the rules pretty well when I talked to him. I mean, if he can do it for that, it's pretty damn refreshing, I think, because it's really, it's only because it's within a quarter of a mile of river that we even have to do it at all. But with his proposal, there is some things the town has to do, if it comes to, we have to meet with the Lake River's Advisory Committee, we have to do that, if we have to meet with Conservation Commission, the town has to do that, and the town, he sends whittronic copy, and the town has to do the printed copies and send it to DES, has the town clerk sign it, so there is some responsibility on the town, but he listed out all his, what he was going to do in his proposal, and, I don't know.
Well, his statement of work covers everything that these other statements of works. I mean, he's doing, if you remember, his, his proposal doesn't include surveying and engineering, but because of the, one of the tier one, the wetland crossing rules, the stream crossing rules, four different tiers, these have to be in the tier, one of them is tier one, the other one doesn't need, it doesn't need...
Excuse me, excuse me, Randy, you two guys, over there? You can go in the other room if you like.
Okay, that's alright.
No, I'm serious, if you'd like to.
So we'll be quiet.
Alright, very good.
So, one of the tier one, the other one doesn't need, it's not a stream, so, I think maybe some of the other, so he claims, and I think he's right, that you don't need engineering for tier one, and you don't need the survey, but he does, he does, well, it's a survey sort, he does GIS, GPS, when he's deluding the wetlands, so, I don't know, depends on how much of a gamble you want to take.
Has he, has he done jobs for other towns around?
Yes, Guilford, Laconia.
Oh, he used to work for Laconia.
Right, and he did wetland mapping there, and the wetland permits.
But he worked for Laconia, I mean, he was an employee.
Yes, yes, he was, right.
But has he done any other contracting work?
I don't know, he does, he, 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 he's a wetland scientist, he's...
Okay, well, you know, it just...
Yeah, I don't know, I just...
He's just so far off the mark, off the...
Right. Yeah, I know, when I saw the bid, I didn't know a thing either, I mean, it's, but, I believe that, after talking to him, that if he, was somebody that, that he needs, that he didn't include, that he would be pretty reasonable on it, but that's just my opinion, I mean, it's, I guess if he, if you decided to go in my ass, I'd ask, once he visited the site and did a little preliminary, if he couldn't do it, notify us immediately, that he can do it that way.
Roll the dice, I'm game, I'm game.
It seems like he can get right on it soon as the snow goes enough, so he can delay the wetlands, he said ten days after he started, he would have the permits ready for the town to submit them, so...
Well, payment is after he completes the work though, right?
I believe so.
So if he doesn't do it, we don't pay himself. I give him a try. Okay.
You want to make the motion?
Sure. Well, we can investigate more, I don't know what we investigate, that's all.
I think we can move forward. Stop it, oh, Julie.
I'm looking at Denise.
I'm going to have to look out of the room.
So we're going to make a move to authorize a highway supervisor and town administrator to enter into an agreement with Powell Asset Mapping, contingent on proof that quote, their quote includes all facets of information required by DES for permitting of the replacement of two culverts on Thompson Mill Road, or...
No, no, this one. You can either do one or the other, but that one sounds pretty good.
Okay, we'll stay with that one. Second?
Alright, we got a second on the floor, and you've heard the discussion of the motion. Are you done? Please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries.
I'll wait up tonight, thank you.
Thanks very much. I guess we move on to the next item, which is item number five, the Energy Committee looks like there's quite a few things to discuss, so who's first?
Lou Grandin, 14 Hallein.
Thank you.
So we have three projects in the works, one of them had a warrant article, the solar project, and we're waiting for a brand-new PPA from Revision Energy on that, so, won't be able to talk about that one. We have another project to look at converting this building and the transfer station to LED lighting, and we've had three, we've had two bids on this building, and three bids on the transfer station, and we spent, I've, I've spent quite a bit of time looking at both bids, and then we had a few meetings, and then one more meeting today, and we looked at a lot of nitty-gritty, and we, we figured out, we really need more information from both contractors to really make a solid recommendation on the LED project. We're hoping it would be ready, it seemed like it was ready, but then, then there were a few details that, that just didn't, just didn't pan out, so...
So you're going to move this to the next meeting?
The LED?
Yes.
Part, yes.
Could I make a suggestion?
Please.
That I work with the Energy Committee to put together a set of specifications, because I think one of the problems is that we don't have something, and so there isn't one set of specifications, one outline, that anyone who's interested in the project can go off of, so we've got people submitting different lighting, and based on different kilowatt-hours, and based on different rates, and I think it would be helpful if we could, for ourselves, put something together to try to standardize this, so that we have an apples-to-apples comparison, because it's not, we don't have that now.
So you want to just issue a spec and say, give us a phrase on complying with the spec?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what we, we kind of concluded today, is what we, we just weren't looking at, because some of the, some of the figures, some of the assumptions were just so different, we just decided, they should, they should use the same, the same form.
Does the board, we have agreement?
Yep.
Alright, Julie, I guess you'll look into that, you work with the town administrator.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, great. There's one more project that's been in the works for about a year, and that's insulating the ceiling of the transfer station office, and we started in the spring with a quote from a company called Yankee Thermal Energy. Originally, we were looking for a quote on the ceiling, and possibly insulating the trash compactors, because they lose a lot of heat. And then we found out that it would be too expensive, it would be way over our budget to do both, so then I, we started concentrating on the ceiling only. The first bid was pretty good, let's see, I think it was about seven thousand dollars, and then I thought, our budget is, is around forty-five hundred, so I, I decided to look at, with a different company, Resilient Buildings Group, so I got a quote from them, they came in around ten thousand, and then we called Yankee Thermal again, and this time a different person came out, the first time, the man who did the quote was rather young, looked about nineteen or twenty, kind of didn't seem to have that much experience, he's not with the company anymore, so the second person who came, Ted Stiles, I think has been with the company for a while, he did a new quote, he hadn't seen the previous quote, his quote came out around ten thousand, and then I reminded him of the first, he looked at it, and they knocked the price down to sixty-five hundred, and that's, that's about sixty, well, sixty-one fifty, and this is it here, you might, I don't know if you have it on your, you have it, okay? So this is, this is the entire thing here, and the quote comes in at sixty-one fifty, and the other aspect of that is, I've been contacting the New Hampshire Co-op, because I was hoping that we could get a rebate, and it took a long time to figure out, if it was going to be a fifty percent rebate, what the rebate was going to be, and then I think about December, Resilient finally got an answer saying it would be thirty-five percent, but I didn't go worth revision, because their bid was ten thousand. So then, after telling Ted Stiles about the rebate, I contacted Joe Lutuski again from the New Hampshire Co-op, and he just confirmed about a week ago that we are eligible for the rebates, which brings the price down to thirty-nine ninety-eight, that would be for six inches of spray foam on the ceiling, that's closed cell foam, so that would be within our budget, which is, we, I think we have about forty-eight hundred dollars left in our budget, so that's doable for us. So that, that's basically where we're at now with this project.
Tom's going to ask the town administrator, have you looked at that?
This one I have not studied, I was trying to understand the LED conversions, and at the time, the PPA, I do know that at one time, the transfer station manager had some questions, if not concerns, relative to this project, so I think I might ask on his behalf, that the board get him to the next meeting, and at least have him offer up his opinion on this project, and whether he thinks this is going to work.
Has Toby, has Toby seen this?
Yes, he was, he was there, when Ted Stiles was there, doing the, the estimate, and I've been talking to Toby several times about this, and he said, he, he thought it would be okay to do it, I mean, you can, you can also confirm that with him. He had, he had another, his alternate idea was to have the roof covered with foam on top of the roof, instead of under the roof. His concern was that some of the wiring on top would, would get messed up, but this is something they do all the time, so, and...
You can check with Toby, just to make sure he's okay with it?
Yeah. When it's done, they put on some spray foam paint to seal it up, to seal, so that nothing, you know, no fumes and things like that. It takes, takes about a day to dry, it takes twenty-four hours to dry, so it's got to be done, it almost takes two days, one day to do it, and another day to dry, so Toby's going to have to coordinate with Ted Stiles about that.
So what we're going to do is the same thing as before, we're asking the town administrator to get involved, she'll check with Toby at this point, and come forward with a recommendation next time.
That would be great.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
Sure.
In terms of insulating the containers for the hydraulic fluid, for the trash compactors, have you got an idea in terms of how much that costs? I know you said you wanted to do one or the other, because you have not money to do both, but what's the cost for the other one?
Well, the first idea that Yankee Thermal had was to build a, a little room around it with, with rigid foam. Toby didn't seem to think that was a good idea, because he thought it would be hard to, to go in and work with the machines after that was done, so he had another idea, and I can't remember what it was now, because that was last summer, but, so we kind of canned that idea, especially since it was over our budget anyways.
Can you, when you're, when somebody's talking with Toby, can you find out what his idea is? Because we lose an awful lot of energy that way, because they're out in the cold, or you have to heat them up, so...
Well, as I remember, there was a pretty good return on investment.
It was a very good return on investment.
We don't want to give that up, but...
Well, that's why I would like us to still pursue it, even though it's not in their budget, I don't know if they'll have any money left over, maybe a little bit, but maybe we can find some other place to do that, but I don't know how much it is, so...
Yeah, the, the people from Resilient didn't think the enclosure was a good idea either.
Well, it'd be nice to find out what a suitable solution would be, and how much it costs.
Because they, we are losing a lot of energy.
Oh, yeah, we all agree on that.
Yeah.
It's like heating your house and even the windows open, kind of thing, so...
Yeah, yeah, exactly, I mean, it's, it's outside, and you have to heat that oil.
Yep, yep.
So...
Excellent.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Sure, you next?
Your knee.
The knee just doesn't respond.
Doesn't want to get up. First of all, I'd like to tell you that John came and met with us for a couple hours today, it was very interesting, because we are struggling with looking at apples and oranges about half the time, and it's hard to separate which are the apples and which are the oranges, and we need to be able to do that in order to set up the kind of thing that I think would be nice for you guys to have when you have to make some decisions, is comparisons of these different bids.
Absolutely.
And, but you can't compare apples and oranges, so, and it's not that bad, but there are places that it is, and so that's why we're delayed, and Lou has been the most involved with this, and then Yana also, who's also worked with us as a job, different, different places, and is very helpful too. She's going to be here, but Lou's going to be gone for two weeks, so I'm not sure we're going to be ready in two, two more weeks, but we would like to get busy.
We'll just put that as a possible deadline, for whatever you're ready.
Yeah, just possible. Okay. First, I just want to remind you that we only have four members, four voting members, and that we have two more members that are not voting members, and one of them is Yana, and one of them is Laurel Cox, and then we have our third non-voting person, but advisor, who's sitting right to your right, and we're very happy to have him. And we meet every month, at least, and we've been meeting, it seems like, every day here for a while, because we were trying to get ready for this, and, but we have a regular meeting on the first Tuesday of the month, and as Kerry knows, sometimes we change that meeting and not, not tell everybody. Anyhow, we, I was going to try to make a summary of this stuff we've been doing for about the last six or eight months, and first of all, there were, the LED lights have taken in a lot of time, because, you know, some of us haven't even seen them, so we had to go, we had to find out, you know, some start from scratch, some start somewhere on the curve, and we went around to site visits with all of the, people are proposing some kind of way to do this, and we now have bids from, I think you said three entities, didn't you?
We had two for...
Two.
For this building.
Yeah, and then one for, no, then three for the other one.
I just want to mention that they, they all qualify for fifty percent rebates.
Yeah.
Which is nice.
Which is exciting.
Yes.
And I guess, to get the rebates, rebates, once we've accepted their proposal, it's a sort of a short, short period of time to make the application, and there, whoever gets the proposal, or the bid, then will help get that application, because I guess it can be kind of complex, so, anyway, we'll get it done. The other thing is that we, due to Julie's, Julie's had many efforts on this, she's probably tired to death of us, but she's been really helpful, and she said, well, that's, you're trying to do it on capital expense, and I said, capital expense, what's that? So she told us about the capital expense fund, and then she wrote a letter for us, asking if they would give us the money to do the LED lights, so in a way, for this building, so in a way, we almost have four possibilities, instead of just three. So anyhow, we want to save the town money, so that's what we're trying to do.
We appreciate that.
The solar panel part came up, because Lou just said, I think we have solar panels, we need to work on that, and so he's been pioneering solar panels with Revision and some of the other people that could supply us with solar panels, and how can we get that? And how can we get that with paying a lot, without paying a lot of money? And how soon is the return, you know, if we do have to do something like that? And then we got a proposal for panels on the roof, and then some people who work here, like the police chief, and the fire marshal, and a few other people said, you looked at the roof lately, you know? Will that hold, that many panels? And we began to look other places where we might put panels, but we were aware that the transfer station might be a very good site, and so we've been investigating that, and, but we've also had the warrant article, which said something about, I believe it said, close proximity or something to the building.
It gives us space to move in.
Yeah, but when I look around this building, I don't, I see, it seems like we're kind of in a low area here, like maybe wetlands? No, perhaps not, but anyway, it does seem low, and there are a few places, might involve cutting trees, there might be things planned for those, at one place that we do know about would be pretty good, so we're still investigating, is there a site over here that we're going to do it?
You have a comment?
I was just going to say, one of the things to consider is, because this building, and we won't exactly know what the kilowatt-hour requirements will be once we do the LED we won't exactly know what the kilowatt hour requirements will be once we do the LED conversion, but I think that we could maybe still assume that this building will draw more electricity than the transfer station, which is the way it is now. So if we put the panels at the transfer station, we are going to have to net meter the majority of the energy produced by the electrical panels, and my understanding is that you don't get a dollar-for-dollar credit. So if we put the panels to first serve this building, I think we would find that we might end up getting a bigger bang for our buck. But that's just something that we have to factor in as we're looking at the cost and the cost savings.
As my husband would say, there are lots of variables.
Yes, he's good at that.
So.
Can I add one?
Yes, of course.
I talked to Jack Erdeman, the new manager of the LEED PPA proposals, and.
He's with Revision.
Yeah, he's with Revision. And he hasn't totally explained how it works very well yet, but I know that in the last PPA proposal, if they built the solar array on the transfer station and we enter into the agreement, it's like we're buying the power from the array now, and we would be buying the power for 10.3 cents. And when we sell it to back, when we sell the excess to the New Hampshire co-op, supposedly they will pay 10.9 cents. I think that's how it works. So just that, that's what we have to clear up and get a really firm idea from Jack Erdeman how, how that works. So we don't want to lose, we don't lose money, so we gotta get a clear answer on that, and that's, that's kind of the, the rub right now, so.
Well, I think the question I have is if we put it at the transfer station, if we put the array at the transfer station and we, we put priority on this building, you don't get, you don't get a volt for every volt you produce because, I mean, the longer, the longer you, the longer you have to go, the more voltage drop you get across.
Yeah.
So if I put out 10,000 at the array, I might only get 9,500 here or something like that.
Well, actually, yeah, that's actually not the way it works. What it does is the solar energy will just go into the grid.
Okay.
And be part of the grid, and then the co-op will buy that power and credit us for what.
For whatever it is.
Yeah. In other words, if we.
You don't want any ones.
If we have 60,000 extra kilowatts a year, they'll pay us for that, and that will, that actually won't cover this because right now it's using about 120,000 kilowatts.
Okay.
Hopefully, it will go down to below 100,000 once we change over to the LEDs.
And that's why we're not gonna rush into it, and I appreciate all the due diligence the committee's doing.
There's a lot of details.
There's a lot at stake there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of prongs to this thing.
And I, I did remind every, the other members of the committee, is that we are volunteers. We are unskilled volunteers, except perhaps for Yana. And we're trying to learn, and that curve is very steep, and I'm just trying to hold things, hold things together and move forward.
Can we, and we've talked about this a little bit with the chiefs, but I would like us to make a recommendation, not a recommendation, maybe a, thou shall. I'm not interested in putting any panels on the roof of this building.
No, it would have to be ground mounted.
Yeah, so if we can direct the committee that any proposals that come forward do not include anything being mounted on the roof of the building.
Yeah, I appreciate your advice, and I'm pretty certain we're almost there anyway because we've talked to them.
The only reason I say that is because someplace, somebody sent me an email that said that they're very excited about the solar panels going on the roof. So I'm not sure why they're hearing that, but somebody's hearing that and they're jazzed about it, so.
But that was one of the proposals.
I'm surprised because I thought we made that decision.
It just came this last week, so.
They did it?
Yeah, so.
Well, you can tell them you haven't decided where it's gonna be yet.
Well, we decided that it won't be on this roof, it could be other places.
Yeah, I think, I agree, Kerry. I think we did pretty much decide that's out, and that's why I was mentioning these other places around the building where we might put it.
They have looked at two other sites. One in front of the, on the kind of lawn park in front of the transfer station for ground mount, and then one back here basically, you know, nothing ground mount, and then the roof at the transfer station. I just want to mention one more thing. The solar array that Revision built in the sand pit, they call it the sand pit array, it's, it's got 650,000 kilowatts. It's about six times the size. All of that is net metered. It just goes right, there's just a great big wire that comes out and plugs in, and plugs into the rest, and it just goes in the grid, and all of that is net metered, and that's how Durham does it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Another thing that we were considering, and in fact, again, Julie helped us write a Warren article for it, and that is offshore energy. And so we had a talk, had somebody come and talk about it in one of our outreach parts. And the thing about offshore energy is every yachtsman I know is against it. They don't want to sail out there and see big turbines. And I said, well, you know, the ocean does not belong to you, it belongs to all of us, and New Hampshire has very high energy costs, some say the highest in the country. And if you're offshore 20 miles or 30, you don't see it unless you get real close. And it seems like a really interesting proposal, and so what we need to do is, is to ask you folks, the board, to send a letter to Governor Sununu and ask Governor Sununu to request of the Office of Ocean Energy Management, which is an offshoot of whatever they did with NOAA. I don't hear about NOAA anymore, I hear about this group. But they will then apply, appoint a stakeholders panel to look at New Hampshire, you know, Massachusetts, they got reams of stuff about it, Maine does have some too. And we need to see, you know, can we do this? We have 18 miles of coast. What does this mean to people? You know? And I hear that all the time, tiny coastline, tiny state, tiny this, tiny that. Then I tell them about Rhode Island, but Rhode Island's is on land still, it's not out in the water. So this is out in the water, like a little floating windmill or something.
Well, somehow I had the impression after the Warren article passed and so on, that there was going to be a letter written. I didn't necessarily, I thought that possibly that organization, I forget the name of the organization that's pushing this.
Yeah.
They're the ones that really said, well, we want to get a Warren article, which you got the Warren article that passed. I thought that they, somewhere in that group, they would generate a draft letter for us to look at.
Yeah. I would be surprised if they didn't. You know, I can ask them to do it and say, why aren't you doing this to help us out?
Because we would appreciate a draft letter, then we can go through the process.
Yeah. No, I can ask them. One of our members of the Energy Committee, her husband, is a part of this, so I'll do that, and then I'll get back to somebody.
Please.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we appreciate, though, the support that you gave by advising, supporting the Warren article. Made a difference, and so did the weather. But anyway, okay. The other thing, too, is that we have won 13 free solar panels, but the amount of use that that might give us on anything, because we tried to think, well, what is, what is small enough here that we can do this on? And what we found is that all of the other towns except for one, and all of them won something. This was one of those win-win contests.
Inclusively spread win.
Yes.
Yes.
So what they did was say that they would like to combine their funds and do something that would really help someone. And so they're, rather than helping individuals, they were thinking of helping institutions like My Friend's Place or the Children's Museum in Dover. And in fact, the Children's Museum was chosen above the others by these other people. So what we would like to do is ask that you vote to support using our 13 panels with the Children's Museum, and probably on the condition that they do a very good solar educational exhibit, that it be interactive, not just a poster, and that we, as the outreach committee, would organize at least one trip to take some of the people from LEED to the Children's Museum, who maybe have never been there and could see this exhibit, and our name, the LEED selectmen, or the LEED, whoever LEED, will be on the sign along with the other towns. Now, there is one town that Julie noticed hadn't signed off on this, and I just want to tell you why. That town is Exeter. And Exeter, when they went around to get people to sign up for Project Energize 360, which you folks did, you supported us in that, they went around to tell people that they might win something. They might win a panel. So they're expecting maybe there'll be some kind of panel, use of whatever panels Exeter won, in their town. So that is a little sticky wicket, and so they've decided that they will try to use them in their town. And I don't know how many panels that is, but I would rather go with the, go with the group personally, and that's our recommendation, is that you vote anyway to support our going in with the other group. And there's kind of a time thing about it because everybody else has said yes, and they're waiting for us. What are we gonna do with our 13 panels? So this, I did, I do have to say one thing, and that, that is that not only are, would the panels be used, but Yankee Thermal and Revision have combined to support this contest. And so Yankee Thermal is gonna donate four days of free labor, and with three people working, and they're going to donate materials to put the panels up. So they'll be done pretty well, and there can be opportunities for outreach, just watching and put them up. So we'll be doing that. And did I cover everything a little bit on that?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think, I think that free labor was for the entire.
Yes, it's for the whole thing. I mean, we, you know, we.
I don't think they would, they would do all the labor. If we decided to use those 13 panels and put them somewhere, I think we would end up having to pay some money for the installation.
We have this much, you know?
We know.
So, yeah. So there was one other thing which I kind of, oh, outreach, how could I forget that? Okay. We've done two outreach programs in addition to this Energize 360, which would be another one. But we've done two, we've had pretty good attendance. The church has offered us the use of their building to use, to have it. It's a good place. And we've had probably between 50 and 60 people total attending those two things. We have another one coming up, and our, our goal is really, at first I thought, well, we ought to just help people get ready for winter, this is, you know, we swim or whatever. But there are people doing that, you know, in different ways around the seacoast area. And so what we thought is that we would try this, well, let's just tell them what's going on in the energy field. You know, what's happening, what's happening right here? UNH is investigating tidal energy, and I'm thinking, does anybody know they had tidal energy here a whole lot sooner than you ever thought of it? You know, like in the 1700s? But anyway, they're a group that we would like to have come and talk, and then before that, we'd like to have this professor, what's his name? I can't think of his name, but anyway, he's a guy that works with data and energy and combines it and uses data to teach people things about energy, what is happening, you know, with energy now, for example. And anybody's trying to work with solar energy right now, we're rushed to death, you know, we better hurry and do it. And so to have some real database information for people, we thought would be very interesting. So April 30th is our third or fourth, if you count 360, thing that we're gonna have, and we're not doing it totally by ourselves, the Sustainability Committee is supporting us, and so is the library in this endeavor. So anybody has any ideas for other kinds of energy, kinds of outreach, please let us know because we're worried a little bit because we see a lot of faces of people that we already know at these. But then I think they need to know too. They probably don't know. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Up to 13 panels. Problem?
Does the children's center have enough money because they're gonna have to buy some things out with soon? I would hate to give them the panels and then nothing happens.
Oh, yeah, no point.
So I don't know because the most expensive part of it is the inverter.
Uh, no, actually, the inverter, the inverters are not that expensive.
Unless something is expensive, isn't it?
If they, yeah, it's the installation on the roof.
Okay. So that, that would be my only concern, that we give the panels to the children's home, but then the children's, children's museum.
They don't have enough resources to finish the project.
To finish it, so then they sit there. So that would be my only concern, but if we have assurances from the children's museum that they're going to use them, I don't have any problem.
They've already, the other groups have already talked with them quite a bit, and so we haven't talked directly with them, but we could certainly do it. I would do it.
That would be my only concern. And what do these panels, how much are they worth?
That we don't know. We don't know. They might not be the very most expensive panels they have.
So.
Well, there are shingles.
For light lights.
Yeah.
Yes.
That'll be the next thing. So I don't know if I need to vote for that or not, but.
I'll go to the town administrator and shield the likeness.
Well, I mean, my view of it is it doesn't hurt to take a vote on it, and it is, it is kind of technically town property that you're agreeing to donate, so.
It's fine, you're good. RSAs allow us to do this?
Sure.
It's been sound too convincing.
Well, actually, there are, there are no, oddly, there are no RSAs regarding disposition of property by solar sources. So we default to 418, where you have the responsibility for many things.
Okay, as long as they're gonna use them.
Yeah.
And for I move to approve the donation of 13 solar panels to the Dover Children's Museum.
Second.
Any discussion? Over the favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, well, I wrote down most of the stuff that I said.
No, that's good.
And not all, but I think this is pretty much what I said. So if you want to read at night.
Well, I was also, I'm gonna suggest at this point, it's always nice that when you make reports like this, we put in the e-cryer.
Sure.
Maybe Denise will work with you to summarize a little bit.
The cryo person.
That, even though it shows up in the minutes, but the e-cryer gets it out a little bit differently.
Did you get one?
Yeah.
What was the second issue here, Julie?
Well, that's, because we don't really, the next one's not really a dollar thing. It was just a portion where they talked about thermal energy, donated time, and we own, or we were gifted a portion of that time, so the board is agreeing to give our portion of the donated time to My Friend's Place and the Great Big Discovery Center, as are, I believe, all of the other communities that. the Great Bay Discovery Center, as are, I believe, all of the other communities that participated in this Energize 360 program.
Does the Energy Committee have a recommendation? Did you understand?
Yeah.
Donate the time too.
What?
Donate our portion of the time.
Sure.
We have an option either My Friend's Place or Great Bay Discovery Center.
Yeah. Well, no, actually, it's the Children's Museum. It's the Children's Museum that everybody is combining on.
Even for, because that's not what I read in all of the emails. So that's fine. That's what's now happening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Therefore, I move to approve moving forward on the Energy Efficiency Project to the Dover Children's Museum.
Second.
Discussion? All with favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. And next item is town administrator.
You may recall that in the previous meeting, we talked about policy of community commissions and parts about doing background checks. So I modified the policy based on that discussion. So I'm just wondering whether the board has any questions on it. If not, we'll bring it forward to the next meeting for final approval.
I read through it, I didn't have any problems with it.
Okay, thank you.
And can you also tell us when it comes back in terms of what the cost is?
Yes, we should know this. It's forty-seven, forty-seven dollars per background check.
Per person?
Per person. And that's state and SBA.
And who does that? Who do you submit it to to get a fund? Does that...
State please.
State please, okay.
Next item, now that the warrant article was passed for one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the architectural and engineering preliminary, we'll call them studies, plans. Just checking in, I'm just checking in with the board to see whether you want me at this point to draft an RFP for the engagement of those services. Is that the direction? It's just, that's my, was my understanding from the numerous conversations that we've had up to this point.
The, the thing that the committee's gonna start to work on is the specifications for that. So you can do like maybe a shell of it, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
But the committee's gonna be working in terms of what those details are. So we don't have those yet. So if you wanna do like a shell, but there's gonna be a rough format of it and fill in the blanks. Yeah, because we're gonna have to say different things in terms of what we're looking for, what, how big the building is, you know, what the finishes are gonna be, all that kind of stuff. And we haven't even started that yet.
Okay.
We meet next, we meet from tomorrow. So we're gonna meet every other week, so.
I, I would certainly recommend that we put in a very strong language that whoever is engaged is going to have to be thoroughly familiar with all of the work of various past committees and architects and engineers. Because we don't wanna keep, because I saw this as I was reviewing it all, we don't wanna keep paying for the same thing to be done over and over again.
I agree.
So it seems to me that we do not need an architect to come and tell us, for example, that we need or want a five thousand square foot town hall building. And that the offices need to be, I mean, we could probably even give them our idea of the rough configuration and they could work off of that because obviously time is money. And so...
Well, those are things that the committee, our attention, I leave our attention, I don't want to speak to the rest of members, but...
I mean, we just don't want them reinventing the wheel where we've already invented the wheel many times.
John Tappin, 18 Stemmingshones Road, and speaking as a member of the committee. One of the things that we do need from the town administrator with her knowledge is the schedule of this whole process. How long is the RFP out there? How long does it take to get responses? How long do, and all that kind of stuff? And that's...
I mean, I would say we would want it to be out there for, I'm thinking not less than six weeks. Because I'm assuming that they're gonna wanna read through all of the various material and that in and of itself is kind of a lengthy process. So I would say not less than six weeks. You know, if we gave ourselves two months, then we could be insured that they would hopefully take their time in putting together their response.
Okay, that's, that was one of the things in putting the schedule together that I didn't know.
Yep.
And in fact, I now know that the number I put in is too short.
Too short. Well, the other thing is in terms of, John started a whole schedule and we were kinda like backtracking because we got some hard dates in there that we gotta hit. So that's part of the process. So he's put in what he thinks it is. And some of them are good guesses and some of them, I guess, this one is not as a guess, but it's a guess.
I'm stuck in thirty days and, but I have no explanation. I'm making no case for that.
Yeah, I mean, I would stretch it to at least six weeks. I'm not sure that we wanna jam these people up in terms of, you know, getting a response to us or feeling that they don't have enough time and so therefore they're not going to respond. So I would, I would make that at least six weeks.
So it sounds like between six and maybe even eight weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
Because I also suspect no matter how carefully we craft the RFP, there are gonna be questions. So this gives us time to get the questions and then issue a formal addendum if need be, so. And you, I would also strongly advise that we put in a mandatory walkthrough. So make sure that they're all familiar with the site and what they're looking at before they submit a proposal. And by making it mandatory, that gives you a really good idea how many people you're gonna get responding to it. And if no one shows up, you know, we might wanna rethink what we issued or who we issued it to or where we advertised it. But we definitely would wanna do that.
Okay, thank you.
While we're on the subject at this point, since we were just talking about energy issue, is there any opportunities that when you do this layout for the possible new town hall or anything, where the, maybe the panels go over there somewhere? I don't know. I don't wanna have something stop one thing, choke it, you know what I'm saying?
The other thing that the committee's gonna have to deal with is also in terms of how green do we want to be? Because we can go super duper green, it costs a lot of money, or we can go partially green or we can go no green. But there's gonna have to be some happy medium in there too. So that's one of the things we have to struggle with.
Well, if you do it by line, I don't know. At the end of the day, you add it up, say, what's the cost of going green, right?
Well, it's one of the things we're gonna have to tell them in terms of, at least with the initial thing, how green do we want to be? So, because green costs green.
Well, I mean, certainly, you know, is by virtue of it being a new building, it's gonna be a whole lot more energy efficient than what we're using now, so.
Well, almost anything is efficient then. Maybe not some, not the parish house, though. I think we're more efficient than the parish house because they have holes in the wall.
Like a hole in the wall.
Well, that sounds good, green.
You spend a lot of green, it goes out through the holes, it's natural.
So I will, I will start work on that and I guess I'll just, when I have a draft of something, I'll email it to the committee and they can incorporate and we can just go back and forth till we have something to bring back to the board. Okay. That would be great. The next item is just something that seems to come up every couple of years, how we pay our election workers. And I will tell you, it's, I guess somewhat haphazard only because you can't make a hard and fast rule, oh, this is how we treat elected officials and this is how we treat appointed officials. It doesn't work that way. But this is how we've been doing it, not that that's necessarily a good reason, but this is how we've been doing it for a very long time. So take that for whatever it's worth. But my understanding is that this year, as in past years, the moderator has questioned or has requested that she be paid to attend the moderator's class. And that's not only not something that we've done in the past, in two thousand, I think it was fifteen, we had a discussion, the same issue came up, we had a discussion with the then Select Board. And that board definitively said, no, we don't consider going to a class to be an event, that they would reimburse, we would reimburse for mileage, but not to pay for the time to attend the class. The problem is, I believe, we pay the assistant moderator the time to go to the class.
But we, we also pay mileage for both of them?
Yes, yes, yes.
And she misses a day of work when she goes to the class?
I, I am...
At least that's what she said in the email.
That's what I've heard, yes.
So the assistant moderator is because of training?
Yes.
And every year it changes?
Well, I mean, they do this and NHMA does this class every year.
And how much does it change every year?
I've never attended the moderator class, so I don't know.
I guess when I'm putting on the floor, somebody's new to moderator school isn't perfect going to be moderator. But afterwards, it's just...
Well, I don't know if they make changes or at least discuss, for instance, like some of the issues relative to storm warnings, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know. I don't know what they do at the class.
I don't know.
Well, my thought is if both of them go, then we need to be consistent, so...
Why one, not the other?
Yeah. So I would be amenable to paying the moderator the hourly rate that we pay the other election people, which is, I don't know what it is, but...
Well, the deputy moderator makes twelve fifty an hour.
But she gets paid a stipend for it.
She gets paid two hundred dollars per event. The other issue, of course, I will raise is that there's always the red flag of, once you start paying elected officials and volunteers as if they're employees, you take on the, I don't know.
The what?
Whatever risk there might be in having employees.
Yeah, it's like, we're just going off the deep end.
Well, we're paying the assistant already, so...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just throwing this out there.
Maybe we shouldn't be paying the assistant moderator. Maybe it was a mistake.
Well, what I'm thinking is those particular jobs don't exactly, they're not gonna be rich doing that particular thing. They're doing a service to the town. So I'm amenable to paying her the hourly rate that the assistant gets to go to...
Which is twelve fifty an hour?
Uh, I don't, it's twelve something.
Is that gonna open the door, though, to paying the hourly rate for events? Are we getting away from the two hundred dollar stipend?
I'm not proposing to change that. I'm proposing to change it when she goes to that particular training, that particular training, not any other training. Because that's the only real thing that's job related.
She gets more than two hundred dollars, I'm sure. Yes. She would make more at the two hundred dollars.
Yes. So then we're treating people who are going to that particular class the same way. It's just a proposal.
I mean, we, we don't, we don't pay other elected officials for their time to go to training or classes or anything else.
I'm going to put a selecter school, they ain't get paid for it.
You get free lunch, though.
But they ain't giving them mileage either.
You get mileage? Yeah, we should get mileage.
I don't like that stuff, you know, it's after lice, don't do those things.
Yeah, you just wanna watch the law of unintended consequences.
Yeah, I'm not enthusiastic about it. I don't, why we send the assistant moderator? I mean, assistant moderator's been the assistant moderator forever.
Well, there's updates in terms of how they do the elections, they can change them at any time, so they gotta go and find out.
I don't like paying for the mileage. So my thought is just cover the mileage and that's it. All right, Mr. Brown?
Well, to be honest with you, if you put somebody in a position that requires recurrent training annually, and I assume it's required for them to go to this or it's not required.
Not required.
This is just an elective on their part that we're gonna go?
Yep.
Well, if it's not required that they go to it, then I guess I would agree with, with John. Why should we, you know, if they feel as though they have to go in order to stay up on it, that's pay and mileage.
Can we put a policy together, the governor?
Yes. I guess what I'm, I just wanna clarify, what I'm hearing is that we're gonna continue to treat an event as an election or, and/or a meeting. In other words, the deliberative session and the elections are events.
Correct.
Going to classes and training are not events.
We will cover mileage.
That's right.
But mileage will be covered. Okay, so we're just gonna keep doing what we've been doing.
No.
We're not gonna pay the assistant.
We're not gonna pay the assistant.
Or not pay the assistant?
Well, I, I think, I would strongly urge us enough to do that because these people are volunteers and you got somebody getting away from their job for a whole day, you're gonna get nobody that wants to be a moderator.
A system, deputy moderator is twelve fifty an hour.
Yeah, I know, but you're insane to stop that as well, aren't you?
I guess I, I didn't hear that part. I didn't realize that that was a decision that...
Well, if you're doing, if you're paying one of them, you gotta pay the other one. If you're not gonna pay the other one, you shouldn't pay that one. So, you know, let's be at least consistent. What I'm saying, in terms of you get these people, if they have to go, I, I understand that. What if they're new? So we're gonna basically pay new people? What if there's an update that they have to go and learn how to do something that's new? Now, the elections change that often, but you know, Bill Gardner could change something in terms of how something run?
Well, in terms of costs, I mean, in terms of costs, the moderator costs isn't any different than the deputy moderator is. I mean, they're both going to the same event, are they not? I mean, why is one getting paid per hour and one getting paid a lot?
Again? It's just the historical way that we've, that's just the way we've done it.
He's regularly paid hourly. She's paid on an event basis, he's paid on an hourly basis. Because he's considered an election worker and not the moderator. Because the election workers come, they get paid an hourly rate. I believe it's the same as his or is it a little bit less?
It's all different. That's the further confusing thing.
So...
It's all different.
I just would hate for us to lose people wanting that training.
We're just going through what, what?
Well, I just hate to open up the Pandora's box either.
Well, how much is it? How long is the thing?
Well, if, if what we're gonna do is agree that an event for the moderator will now include the annual moderator class as put on by NHMA, it's an additional two hundred dollars a year.
Well, that's not what I was proposing, but I do propose to pay her an hourly rate just like what the assistant's got.
Okay, then it's, you know, it's, I don't know.
Besides this...
I don't know how long that class is.
Either way, it's, it's...
Getting there.
Well, it's peanuts. The money's not the issue.
So maybe that's a hundred dollars if you do it by the hourly rate.
But you're just trying to get consistency.
I'm trying to be consistent.
I understand.
We have a thing that's happening that's inconsistent, so...
My only question is if we then pay the moderator an hourly rate to go to the moderator class, but then switch back to the event rate for the elections, is the moderator then gonna say, well, now I wanna be paid an hourly rate for the elections? I don't know. How long was the... Well, yeah, I, I agree with that. I understand that. Unless someone puts in a timesheet and says, well, I had to field phone calls because of the snowstorm question and I had to...
Well, I think we include it...
It's just cleaner if you call it, hey, you get paid the two hundred dollars to do the election.
Well, I think two hundred dollars for an event like it is, is for the moderator's proper. I guess I could bend to your way in the sense of any kind of classes that tend, you get paid an hourly rate, that's equal to it. So right now, it's at twelve fifty, leave it at twelve fifty.
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
See, it's twelve fifty.
Yeah, right, right.
Any...
If you had one of these little devices, you would know.
But I have YouTube, so what am I, what do you...
Okay.
Plus, I don't need technical assistance for this, okay?
Any, any classes or are we gonna limit it to the moderator's class?
Limit it to moderator classes. So if you develop a policy, so we can work, you know, have something in paper. And...
Make it retroactive.
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be for this past session. So it's twelve fifty an hour.
Same as the assistant.
Right.
So they're both being...
Or the...
Deputy.
Deputy.
Yeah, I got it mixed up myself, deputy.
Okay, thank you. Next item, we discovered, not discovered, but because we've gotten these questions before. So we have more assessing information available online and that's done through Avatar. And in, when Avatar first set this system up statewide, they did not allow municipalities to make available the mailing addresses for properties. It was just the property location. Subsequent to that decision, I think in two thousand and three or two thousand and five, when Avatar first started doing this, they would get contacted by the various municipalities who wanted that information to be available online because, and we hear this, when you go online to get your property card, it's, it's not the same as what you can get if you come to town hall. If you come to Town Hall, you can get a property card with the mailing address on it. If you wanted a butters list, you have to come to Town Hall so you can get the mailing addresses. So, and in 2012, we signed an agreement, the select board signed an agreement with Avatar that specifically said, no, we're not going to make the mailing addresses available. But that information, Avatar now allows that to be in the online system, and there are many towns that have the mailing addresses on. Again, it just makes it easier for the end users to be able to do all of that online and not have to come to Town Hall, especially if they're trying to do a butters list. So, this is the agreement that you have in front of you tonight, which is to add the mailing addresses to the online data that's available. And I also asked Karen Rossi if she would be interested in putting building permit information online, and she said yes. So, at this time, I'm asking if the board would like to go forward and do this. It doesn't cost us anything extra. We do pay for this, but it doesn't cost us anything extra to have building permit information or the mailing addresses available online.
So, what's up there now is their physical address, right?
The location of the property, yes.
So, if somebody owns a property but lives someplace else, that address will now be...
Correct, which is what you need in order to do a butters list. Which, as you know, people going before the planning board are required to send out butter notices and so forth. Or there are other reasons why people want to know who the butters to a property are. And so it's public information. If somebody comes into Town Hall, they can get it.
They just call me.
Or they just call. If it's one property, we'll tell them. If it's 20, we tell them they need to come in.
So if it doesn't cost any more, I'm okay with it? It's public knowledge, so...
Yeah, the knowledge is public information. Okay.
Therefore, I move to approve the updated Avatar associates' data configuration options, which is request and release, all must present.
Second.
Discussion.
Allova.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Should we, you know, just stick it? I can even sign it on behalf of the board, or you can just put your... Actually, I guess it should be carried, because he's actually...
What?
Your first official act.
You got to sign it.
My first official act?
Oh, where's the, where's the gavel?
Oh, my gosh. So much for my first official act. No gavel.
We'll let you close it tonight, how's that?
So which one of these should I do? The authorized signature, the municipality?
Well, the municipality is a town of Lee, so just need your signature.
You decide. Denise will have, that's what she's got to learn. We pay her a big bucks for this.
It does a great job. Let's keep that straightened up. Now, make sure we go to non-public. You shit those floors of the chair.
Do what? Oh, nothing, nothing, nothing at all, nothing at all. Just finish it in.
I am, I am, I am.
You want to check it before? No. Denise will check it. She'll let you know.
She'll beat on you. Anything else, Tom Minister?
Uh, no.
We move to item number seven. I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Can I ask one question on I? Is this the write-in person for the trustees of the library?
I believe so.
Because we don't appoint those people, so...
Yeah, you do.
We appoint the library trustees?
Yes, you do.
I don't remember ever signing one for them.
What do they advise you going to do? Do we appoint people? I didn't see anything in there.
Oh, no, you don't appoint people. You elect they...
They're elected, yeah.
But the library trustees elected too.
They are, but if there's an open position, the trustees recommend and the board has to approve it.
Oh, okay.
Make any sense?
I forgot to move down by one, but I did.
Coming back at you.
He left the top one for you and you didn't take it.
What?
He left the top position for you and you didn't take it.
Sorry, I'm not used to signing the top one. I'm used to signing the second one. I can't help it.
Usually takes great...
How many times you got to sign this thing?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, it's a juicy one. Did that person that get the votes, one of the budget committee? I don't know. It was two that got the equal votes, and there was one that got less than the person accepting.
I don't know what Lyndon's done with that. Wait, did you say advisory board committee? Well, there were two slots open.
I know. They're filled.
They're filled, all?
Yep, yep. Court lost, and the other two are in those two positions. And then Thomas Murdock got the...
They're all filled.
Yeah.
Oh. Didn't you say you're not going to this NARA all-day conference?
Yes, we are.
Because they signed you up for it, and therefore, they issued a check as if you were going.
Which one? This one on Wednesday?
I believe it was on Monday.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday. Okay, so you're not going. Just, Joanne will have to issue a different check.
I just can't get on that working bar yet somehow.
That's fine, that's fine.
Anything else over there? Joel Secher? I move into a non-public session with H.R.S. 91-8, caller 32D and E.
Second.
Little call vote, Mr. Bucky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCarce, yes. Motion carries. Tom Minister, join us.
I know what I did wrong. I told them both out the same. Uh-oh. And one's for, one's for different ones for the other, so...
Well, since I'm still pro-Town at this point, actually, I move to seal.
One of them.
One of them.
A second?
I need a vote, um, Mr. Bucky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCarce, yes. Motion holds to seal. Okay, do you want to hand those to the...
I don't know if they should be legal.
Well, I still got to make it legal. Next item is miscellaneous unfinished business. Anything to report?
The TCVC had a resignation. Richard Jeffrey has resigned, and we've inquired of three individuals to see if we can boost our membership. We've got a lot of work coming forward, so we'd like to get some more hands. I've contacted three of them. Two are amenable. They will fill out the forms at Town Hall, so at the next meeting, they can get appointed. The third person is on the fence. We've contacted his wife and tried to push him over the fence. We'll see how that works. But that's what's going, I have to say. Oh, I'm sorry. The other thing is, the Lamprey Regional Solid Waste Cooperative decided to surplus their trucks, so they're getting out of the trucking business. They have put it on the town's websites, the municipal association's website, our website, of course. And so they're getting out of the trucking business. So, depending on what we get from that truck, and depending if the cooperative charges the five towns interest, even if they charge us interest, the payment they will have to make is very, very, very small. And so, we don't have to worry about a big outlay. And even they're talking about maybe doing it over two years. So for us, it's going to be very, very small. We're talking under $1,000, so... But more information to come, depending on what the truck sells for, so...
And from the planning board, from your view, not much is happening. It's, it's pretty quiet at this time. Bedrock Watkins is still quiet. They're going back to the zoning board. I have not heard from Karen with the responsible as yet from the board itself. Oysterow School District came in for their public hearing with respect to addition on the Mastway School. Obviously, they're going to add classrooms in the back and extend the front out. You know, obviously, home and security type issues. They're going to respond, as suggested from the board, to put a chain link fence in to separate when all that activity goes on. And it did hit that, I think you already told us before, that probably not this year, but next year, they're going to try to expand the cafeteria in Mastway School. It was lightly attended. Of course, they do not have to follow the dictates of the board. We can make recommendations, and it's their decision whether they want to follow through or not.
Can you, any more information? Karen, the last meeting we had, she said something about the whole just deal with agritourism. Had a conversation with her on Monday. She says they're still looking into that?
Yes.
It's going to be problematic for some of our businesses in town. She said she spoke to Mr. Hutton, but she hasn't spoken to Mr. Ferguson yet for Black Hill, but... Does she have any more? Do you have any more information about how that's going to affect them? And what do we have to do?
Well, each one of them have to come into the zoning board at this point, one by one. And of course, includes the haunted overload as well.
Oh, okay.
All right, and they'll have to come in and go through a process because we've never adopted agritourism into our regulations. It's been oversighted sometime, but it never happened. So we just don't have it there. So we're going to have to take care of that next time around to actually move it in.
The next voting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, they'll have to come in and do a presentation and get a variance? Or what are they going to have?
They'll have to get a variance at this time.
Okay, until it's voted in, that's they want to.
That's correct. So it's something that was missed. The lawyer picked it up from the board at this time, and the board is following through. Interesting twist.
Now, that's the planning board, not the ZBA, right? Or is it the ZBA they get?
The ZBA is the one that deals with these issues. They have to go back to the variance.
But the planning board's going to do the change?
That's correct, absolutely. That's it from my end. Mr. Brown, anything else?
I think the only question I have is, we received an email or a letter from a man on, is it 3 Wednesday Hill? Indicated his displeasure, so on and so forth. And in doing so, also said that he has discovered that we can be fined. And I would like to know, under what, if that's accurate? Under what, I mean, does he just, are we subject to fines? I haven't ever seen anything that said we're subject to...
Well, you'd be subject to a fine if, for example, someone thought you violated 91A and took you to Superior Court, and they prevailed in Superior Court. That would subject you to a fine.
Yeah, if we broke a statute or something.
Like, this isn't 91A, so I have no idea what fines he's talking about. I would, I'm not concerned about it.
No, I just wondered, you know, he brought up the subject of being able to fine us, so I'd like to know whether, okay?
Well, you know, someone else recently and continues to claim that we owe him $20 million because he had to go to the planning board.
It happens.
It happens.
But as far as I know, he brought the issue to the police chief, the police chief forwarded it to Attorney General.
Right.
And that's where it is.
Yeah.
So I haven't heard anything back. I don't know if you've heard anything back, so...
No.
If the AG is not going to move on it...
I didn't care so much about, all I wanted, all I wanted to know is, I want to know is, is there, is there something that says?
The only one I'm aware of right now is the one under 91A.
Okay.
That's not to say that there aren't others. He didn't reference any statute, so I don't know.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything else? Room Twitter?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.